I'd like to call the April 21st, 2020 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission meeting to order. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. As our county commission meets this evening, our country and the state of North Carolina and our community continues to be in the midst of a public health crisis unprecedented in our lifetimes. When our commission met on March 24th, just a month ago, there were 65,000 Americans that had been diagnosed with COVID-19. There are now 800,000 documented cases in the United States, and we know the actual number of people who have been sickened by this illness is much greater than the documented number of cases. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to recognize the 43,000 people in our country who have lost their lives to COVID-19. People may offer silent prayer for the victims of this illness and their families, for those who are sick now and who we hope for recovery for, as well as for the doctors, nurses, and first responders who are working hard to care for the sick and save lives, as well as all of the people who work in essential businesses, from cashiers in grocery stores to truck drivers distributing food across our country, who've continued to show up for work, to do critical jobs so that the rest of us can remain safe. I also ask that we all reflect on what we can do to help slow the spread of this dangerous disease and to help our neighbors and community navigate this great challenge that we're facing together. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting." All right, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions by any commissioners about the consent agenda?
I just have a question for Lamar. The minutes of the last meeting, I assume that'll be grouped with the next agenda?
Did we group the day's meeting minutes today?
I don't think they're in there, the one from the meeting we just had the other day.
That was Thursday, that was after the actual application.
Got it. That's why. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. So we have a couple of presentations. We're going to start off with Dr. Jennifer Mullendor, and she will be providing an update on the county's efforts in response to the COVID-19. And Fletcher Tobe is also with us as well, and I think he'll be participating as well. Thank you both for being here.
Thanks for having us. So I'm just going to give a brief update, and then I'm going to turn it over to Fletcher. So we remain at this time at the same case count that I informed the public of yesterday. So we're still at 48 lab confirmed cases and three fatalities associated with COVID-19 in Buncombe County residents. And at this time, still no lab confirmed cases in congregate living facilities. We have seen an uptick in the number of tests that have been reported to us over the last 24 hours because yesterday, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services sent out an updated provider memo that said, "We believe that testing capacity has increased sufficiently that we now encourage providers that if they suspect someone of having COVID-19 and are capable of safely performing the test, to do the test." And so the person who's gathering that, getting those reports from the providers that they've done tests, mentioned to me today that we've had an influx of faxes from providers. So that's good news. Providers are eager and able to test, and so we anticipate those results should start rolling in within, you know, 24, 48 hours. And so our case count is likely to increase, and so we'll keep the public posted on that. And as we get into this period of where we want to increase testing and need to increase testing in order to be able to get a better picture of what's going on in the community so that we can relax and ease back on the restrictions, I'm going to have Fletcher talk a little bit about the symptom checker tool that has been developed that will enable people to get their questions answered about, "Do I have symptoms of COVID-19? Should I be tested, or do I need additional follow-ups?" So I'm going to turn it over to Fletcher.
Great.
All right, good afternoon. So I was just going to share with you guys in a moment a new COVID-19 self-checker we've developed in partnership with a local epidemiologist. But do you want to talk about her real quick? Her name is Dr. Jennifer Runkel. She's done a fantastic job with us lately working to develop this tool. She's a PhD-trained epidemiologist working locally in an academic partner. She's a researcher with the North Carolina State University Institute located here in Asheville, and she's been partnering with us on many fronts over the last year, but helping us now to develop and implement this surveillance tool. So a big thank you to Dr. Jennifer Runkel. So Max, if you want to kick it over here, I'll talk a minute about the tool. But so there's a lot of self-checker tools available right now. The CDC has one, Johns Hopkins has some. And they do what our tool does, but they stopped there. They let you know if your symptoms, you know, point towards COVID and what you should do. But our tool that we're going to share with you now goes a couple steps beyond that, and that doesn't just stop at diagnosing your symptoms. It helps us create a longitudinal study, meaning that at the individual level, we could check up on people two days down the road, seven days down the road to monitor systems. So one, it's going to help us connect people to testing, contact tracing, and trends that the, you know, Governor Cooper's roadmap to a new normal. And two, on the backside for Buncombe County Public Health, it's going to help us develop data so we can start looking at those trends, knowing where, you know, anticipate possible hospital surges, any other demands on our healthcare systems. So the high-level benefits, again, is that individualized patient follow-up, public health surveillance for situational awareness, so we get a lead time on possible potential surges to the hospital. We can prioritize testing, helps with our clinical care coordination, will connect the dots for us on a lot of our contact tracing needs. And because it's developed locally, we can modify it quickly as our guidance changes, as our definitions of symptoms change. We can modify that very quickly to be responsive. And again, that's meaning that the governor's roadmap to a new normal. So fundamentally, we could get this, as you go through the self-checker, you get four outcomes. I won't get into the details of that, but basically you could get told that you need to seek care, that you can stay home and quarantine, that you're good there with your current actions, or you need to stay home and we're going to contact you for some extensive contact tracing, and that we're going to follow up on a daily basis with you to monitor your symptoms. So I'm going to take a minute and walk us through this tool as if I was going through it. So you can see here, it's an introduction, lets you know what the intent of it is, always reminding people that if they are having acute symptoms, to call 911, that this isn't, it isn't replacing a healthcare provider. It's just a tool for them to use. And it goes through consent things. So there are some, there are no privacy concerns with this. We're HIPAA compliant, we're taking all the legal steps required to disassociate the data from the individual information. So just want to let everyone know that we've thoroughly vetted that process. So they go through, they'll consent. And they go to the next page, and here they work through some basic information. They can enter, they'll enter their age, their sex, race and ethnicity, they'll put in a zip code. And then here you can pick your symptoms. So let's say I have a fever and a cough, and I also think I've lost my sense of smell, my sense of taste lately. And that started for me, started noticing that yesterday. Now it asks me if I have any of these conditions, and say, you know, other than that, I'm relatively healthy, so I don't have any of those. If I've been in close contact with someone and tested positive. So I don't know, but say maybe I know somebody at work has been tested as well. So I'll say yes there. I don't smoke. I have a provider. And now it asks, you know, "We want to check in with you each day to see how you're feeling for the next seven to 10 days." Because we know people after exposure can go a long period of time before they become symptomatic. And even once they're symptomatic, they can be mildly symptomatic and then have a sharp falloff. So we want to follow up with them. So they have an option to do that via email or via phone. So say I put in my phone number, and I go to the next page. And then asks, since I'm using a phone, it's going to ask for a first name so we can personalize it, make sure we get in touch with the right person. And then, again, ask for one more consent, asking if we can share some of their answers. And again, this is not using their specific data, but a disassociated data collection. We'll be sharing a response, you know, to help our response locally in Buncombe County, and that we're taking all the required steps and more to protect their health information. So I agree to take part of that study and then submit it. So now it tells me, you know, I should stay home and self-isolate, call my doctor or healthcare provider. If I don't have access to that, gives me the option of our public health hotline. Also tells me to take additional steps to stay with some others. Then here's what to expect. So I answered criteria that I'm going to meet the contact tracing. So I'm going to, for the next seven to 10 days, somebody from Buncombe County Public Health will be reaching me through that contact number to follow up, check up on my symptoms, see if I'm getting better, see if I'm worsening, to initiate the contact tracing, start interviewing me of who I've had contact with. And there's also resources here to connect to for further information. So really a short and simple tool, but it's going to carry a lot of water for us as we move forward to combating COVID-19 and getting us in place where we could start reopening our community. And Max, you want to switch me over real quick? Talk real briefly about our campaign to push this out. All right, thanks, Max. So we're going to put buttons up. This is the branding logos we're going for. Phase one, you know, we've been testing this for a couple of weeks now, translating it into Spanish and Russian as we speak. It'll be on our webpage. Phase one is going to be introduced, go live at our community update to the media on Thursday. Go on our banner ads, articles. We're going to have a video tutorial, widespread media release, and on social media. From there, we're going to a short secondary development period to see how our initial reaction is, see if there's any issues as that section of the community starts interfacing with it. And then working this phase two from there, we'll have a more broader reach, sharing that through mass notifications to all city of Asheville and Buncombe County systems. Here just kind of show what the banner will look like. So it's very apparent, that big red block on the website. It's going to be hard to miss it. And just, like I said again, this carries a lot of water for us as we're doing our connecting dots for testing, tracing, and our trends. Yeah, and MAHEC's partnering with us as well. One of the things we do is connect, if people don't have resources, MAHEC's going to partner with us. We route them to MAHEC for their drive-in service. So have some other community partners coming in that this can refer them, take the burden off of public health and some urgent cares as far as testing and screening. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. First of all, thank you to y'all and the staff and developers who've been working on this and the community partners. This feels like a really positive, concrete step forward. And just to break it down a little bit, to think through, could you just kind of walk us through, it sounds like one group of people that this will really help is people who don't have an ongoing provider, but they are having symptoms. And so this will kind of be a bridge into them getting daily checks, but also getting access to a provider. And now that the testing criteria have changed, potentially testing more easily. And then for people who do have a provider, this is kind of like a first step in, like maybe they're not, they don't, they're not sure if they should call their doctor or not, but they are feeling kind of funny. And this is kind of a way to start to initiate a process of saying, "I don't know what I've got, but I think I've got something." While at the same time sort of being tethered into the county's contact tracing system. Is that, or maybe you can, please?
So contact tracing, so contact tracing specifically is once we have a case,
Right.
then looking at all their close contacts and doing it. What this really is, is sort of giving us like an idea of what's going on out in the public, like to know, like, oh, we have X number of people who have symptoms.
Great.
And then, again, those who have a provider can connect with their provider, those who don't can be connected with MAHEC or some other provider. And then those who definitely need some closer follow-up will get that, that close follow-up, that sort of warm connection, not just a computer telling them what to do, but
Right.
but potentially a nurse picking up a phone and giving them a call. So. And then, yes, if that person does go and get tested, then that will initiate the contact tracing of their close contacts and getting them tested.
Great.
There's a lot of terminology.
No, this is very helpful. I think the more we break it down. So just as we sort of zoom out for a second, the two things that are now happening locally are, one, this goes online. So we'll have a resource for anyone who's symptomatic in Buncombe County.
Or even people who don't have, I don't mean to interrupt, but
No, please.
People who don't have, or aren't sure.
Right.
You know, the people who think, "Well, I'm not sure. I'm worried. I might have COVID." This is potentially a way to reassure them. Like if they look at that symptom list and they're like, "Oh, I don't have any of these things," or, you know, so potentially it can help those individuals as well. Anybody can use it.
Anyone can use it, right.
Anybody can use it, and we'll give them an answer of like how they should proceed.
Great. And it'll start giving us more information about the number of people in the community who have symptoms that could be COVID. And then parallel to this with the new testing guidelines that have been issued, a lot more people in our community should be able to be tested, assuming we can have testing supplies available.
Get them.
Okay, great. Thanks for.
It'll also relieve a burden off of our 911 call centers and EMS first responders because a lot of people can go to this tool and get their answers instead of calling there.
That's really great. Thank you all.
And I would say another feature is say somebody is not internet savvy or doesn't have access, that if somebody called our 5300 hotline, the person who answers that call can walk them through it, right? Can ask them the question, fill out the symptom checker for them, and give them the same information. Like do that data entry for them and get them connected into the system.
Part of our media campaign will be pushing that option through the Ready Team Call Center in collaboration with the city as well. That it reads just like a script, and we also have the 211 resources for translation as well. So, yeah, so phone, email, websites.
That's great.
Thank you.
So that does sound, that sounds good. I mean, I keep thinking everything on my phone's an app, and I know we don't need to go to anything like that, but I mean, I think that's a good thing that you're doing. Mention the governor's, you know, next steps that's coming out of the state. And I apologize if I missed that last feed. Do you have any, like, two or three bullet points on what that looks like?
Yeah.
And you give us a summary of that?
Real quickly, just so you know, we also developed this to be mobile friendly, so it looks really good on a phone screen. So what the governor talked about last week on Thursday was he kind of mapped out a roadmap to a new normal. And it's a three-pronged approach for the state. He said we need to have more testing and easy access to testing. We need to have extensive and robust contact tracing, and we need to have clear downward trends in our data. And so everything we're doing, we've been working on it for weeks, is moving us towards those goals. And that's why I refer to this as a huge way to carry that water, you know, with connecting the dots between people and the testing, and eventually the contact tracing once they qualify for it, and having the data to show the trends that, you know, we are downward trending.
Okay, so I got another question. Can you give us, make people feel a little bit better about nursing homes in Buncombe County? Or give some additional information about that? Because when I, you know, when I, when I look at, you know, what we're going through, you know, that, you know, having dealt with that with my mother, you know, my mind goes automatically to there and the hospitals where people, I don't worry, probably should worry more about, you know, myself and where I'm at and what I'm doing and, you know, and but I'd like to hear a little bit more information about that if you have some.
Yes, sir. So I'll bring up Dr. Mullendor here in a second, but since the beginning of this, we recognize that nursing homes are extremely high-risk environment. Everybody in there is going to be on multiple levels in that high-risk category. So we've made that one of our priorities from the day we stood up our EOC and before. We've taken proactive steps, not only to push them information, but also we've sent out collaboration with the county fire marshals to visit each one of those in person and deliver packets of information and answer questions. We, in our iterations of our Stay Home, Stay Safe Order, we've had specific caveats for those long-term care facilities to only allow essential people, to not allow visitors to keep logs. So we've taken proactive steps, realizing that, as we've seen across the state and across the nation, once COVID gets into those facilities, it could be very disastrous. Dr. Mullendor sucks.
Yeah, so early, early on, we were communicating them in multiple facets, like through robo-calls and blast fax, and now emails, making sure they have the most up-to-date guidance. The state today just in fact sent out another long-term care facility toolkit, so we'll get that information out. Our community health's nurses are in close contact. I mean, it's not that we haven't tested individuals in those facilities or that the facilities aren't doing testing. They are doing testing. It's just that so far, all the testing has come back negative for COVID-19. And these facilities are taking things seriously. They're practicing proper infection control. They are making sure they're using PPE. They're quarantining new admissions to their facilities. So, I mean, and we're, I'm in a, I've been for the past several weeks in a call with leaders, administrators at the skilled nursing facilities in the county and Mission Hospital to make sure we have good processes and they have everything they need, and we find out what they need. Dogwood Health Trust has been on the call to find out how can they support. So, you know, we've had really good collaboration and communication. I mean, am I surprised we don't have an outbreak in one of these facilities yet? Yes, would be my answer, right? Just by seeing what's happening in Henderson County, right? And so I'm thinking that those proactive efforts have paid off a lot, but I also think honestly, there's some probably luck involved, right? And I know that these facilities are doing the very best they can to protect their residents and staff. And I think everybody's doing everything they can to do so.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would agree that, you know, I'm very proud of the citizens of Buncombe County and the friends and, you know, neighbors that I have and that I hear from. And I was just curious at the state level, as we, you know, there's a few things in some of these orders that just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I go to Lowe's or Ingles or wherever it is. Actually, I haven't been to Lowe's. But Ingles, which I'm sure all of our grocery stores are doing an amazing job, but I'll give a shout out to Ingles. And they're just doing, all their team members and just doing an amazing job. But if I can, if I can follow lines in that store, then I would think I could do the same thing in a little small retail store. So I'm hopeful as these numbers kind of stay where they're at or, you know, get even better, I hope. You know, that if the state's going to look at that and that we can look at, look at some of those things that make sense. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me that you can't go into a store that has five people in it, but you can go into one that's got, you know, 150 in it, you know? So hopefully we'll move towards some of those things. We had a pretty vigorous discussion the other day on testing, and which I think, you know, we should, definitely should be a part of the recovery in what we're doing. There were some things in resolution I didn't quite agree with, but I'm not going to go in all that. I'm just curious as to tests and availability of tests. I know that, you know, that I, I know a few of us went to the test sites the first couple of days that we did them. We did a couple hundred, I think, so.
360 some.
Okay, so, you know, I'd like to know how many tests, you know, we've done since then, what's availability of testing? I mean, we talk about testing, it's a national discussion, governors are talking about it, states are talking about it. And so now we're talking about it. But what's the reality of where Buncombe County is right now on testing?
So when I checked yesterday, which was the last time I really looked hard at the numbers, about 1,900 tests have been performed in Buncombe County. And that number does not include any, anybody who's doing rapid testing. So today I was able to get data from Mission. So Mission switched over to doing some in-house testing, which results come back within hours. And so they're not going to report those tests to us unless they're positive, right? And so I still think it's like just over 1,900 tests as of, as of, you know, early this morning have been done. But like I said, today, we're already hearing, you know, providers, you know, especially some of the urgent cares in the county that have already been doing testing, but now that they have received assurances from their commercial lab vendor that they are going to be provided with X number of tests on a routine basis. They've opened essentially the faucet on testing and have been doing more. And so I do expect that when I look at the count tomorrow, it's going to be, you know, 2,000, you know? And so we also have, you know, family physician offices, pediatric offices that have been testing throughout this entire time when they suspect it. A lot of it comes down to, do they have adequate PPE? Do they feel comfortable that they can protect themselves? Do they have a way to bring patients in and test them in the parking lot, things like that? And so I do feel in my conversations with some of those providers, with the federally qualified health centers in town, that more and more clinics, like every day, are coming online. And there is capacity, like what we're hearing from the state and what I'm hearing from the providers locally is that, you know, LabCorp is telling them, "We can get you. We are going to be able to provide you the test that you need." And our turnaround time is, you know, definitely down. They were saying two to four days, but we're seeing results coming back within 24 hours now. So all signs point to availability of testing, timeliness of test results. Like we are going in that right direction. And that even with the increase in testing now, because the state has given their blessing to do so, processes have been streamlined enough that we shouldn't go back to where we were before, where it was taking seven, 10 days for a result. So I'm feeling positive about that. We're looking, we've been in conversation with other health departments in the state and learning, like, what are they doing? And I would say, you know, health departments in the state across the board are focused on what health departments have to do, what public health does, what our role is, which is when you get a case, you're doing the intensive contact tracing, you're identifying those contacts who have symptoms and connecting them to testing. There aren't, you know, the Mecklenburg model, I would say, is they partner with their two big health systems there, who, they're the ones who are driving the, the community, like, drive-through testing stuff, right? And so I've been in conversation with health systems and partners here to see, like, how can we replicate that model out here? So that if, if I'm a person who doesn't have a primary care provider or who, my primary care provider isn't able to do the testing for me because they don't have adequate PPE, how can, you know, how can we get those people to a place where they go and get their specimen collected, get it sent to the lab, and get them a result quickly? So we are, like, that's where I was before doing this. I was on phones with practices and labs to kind of get that moving. And so I feel good about it. I feel we're getting, every day we get to a better and better place.
Good. It's good to see you smile. Thank you.
I know, isn't it? I know, isn't it? I do, I do, I do like this. What do you mean? Oh. Sorry, I do want to say something though, just to the public and to everybody here, like, because of the way the FDA has, has sort of handled, you know, this is a new infection, testing had to be created for this, and the processes they put in place, they have allowed labs to, to kind of go out there and, and offer, offer their services, offer their product before actually being, like, truly vetted, like the way the FDA normally establishes. And so I would say that, you know, I've advised providers to really read the fine print, because you, you don't want to just use any test. You want to use a test that gives you accurate and valid results.
Sure.
And we have heard many tales across this country of, of states even, not just providers, but states even, investing money in tests that ended up not being good. And so, despite, I just want the public and everybody to understand that not all tests are created equal. And so, I know that the state is really vetting things and I'm reaching out to them when I learn of a product to say, "Is this, is this a good product? Is this a good lab?" So that we're using resources wisely, that we're actually getting valid results and not making people think they don't have something when in fact they do, or that they do have something when in fact they don't. And so, it is not a quick process and it's like weeding through a lot of information to make sure you're making the best choice for the community. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
You said Mission's been doing the tests, right? And we've got no positive, they're not going to give us the information if they're not positive.
No, they're giving, they're sending, like, we haven't, anytime anybody's doing a, a point-of-care test, like a rapid test, like if you go to your doctor's office and they did a flu test on you, not that flu is reportable, but, but it doesn't make sense that they would necessarily report the negative. But what we, I have connected with Mission staff so that I'm now able to get, like, how many tests are you doing? That are Buncombe County-specific? I mean, that's the other thing you have to remember, not everybody who goes to Mission Hospital is a Buncombe County resident. And so they have to kind of weed through that data and, and get me like, numbers. And they're willing to do it and they have done it. And so I'm going to be better able to understand the true picture now, as of today.
Okay, so, you know, how many, how many positive have come back from Mission? You said none as of yesterday?
I didn't, I don't think I said that. What I said was, they've originally were just reporting positive tests to us and not the negative rapid tests that they were doing. So we know all the positives that they have been doing that are Buncombe County residents. Do I know that specific data, data point right at this moment? Off the top of my head, I don't, but, but I would say we know every positive case in the county. That's the most important thing. Whether it was tested, they were tested at Mission or they were tested at an urgent care or they were tested by us. Does that make sense? I, I can get you, I can, I just can't give it to you right this minute off the top of my head.
Yeah, not just me, everyone.
So, so, the nineteen hundred tests, is that what Buncombe County's done? Is that what?
No, this is, providers in Buncombe County have done.
That's reported.
Again, what we.
That's been reported to you.
Correct. And this is, again, providers are encouraged to report suspected cases of COVID-19, I mean, really they're required by state law to report suspected cases of COVID-19 to their, to the health department in which the person resides, right? We know just in regular, like, for pertussis, for other things, sometimes providers don't fail to do it. I mean, things happen, right? But I, but I feel pretty confident that the number we have is pretty accurate. There might be some under, under-reporting. And I don't know that rapid testing has made it into these local primary care practices yet, but again, as the, those are the more appealing, right? You want to know, as I'm, as I'm seeing this individual now, I want to know, do they have it or do they not? So as that technology improves and becomes more available and is, you know, we feel is accurate enough, I do feel that providers will expand into that field. And so, that's going to be something for us to figure out, like, how will we know? It's one thing when Mission is the only one doing it. It's a whole nother thing when every practice, every primary care practice in the community is doing point-of-care testing. How are they going to, how are we going to get that information from them of how many are they testing, not just how many are positive? So we're working on that.
When I ask that, because some of the, one of the questions I always get is.
How many?
So we got nineteen hundred people have been tested, but we only have forty-eight lab confirmed. So, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's positive we don't have anything in nursing homes. I can tell you the nursing home in Swanonaw, we had a fire alarm, one guy went in, he had his blood, his temperature checked. They're not letting anybody in those nursing homes. They're doing a great job. But we also look at the other thing as well, is nineteen hundred tests is a lot of, lot of tests, not as many as we need. I agree with that.
Right.
Forty-eight lab confirmed, that's, that's positive.
Yeah.
That means that we've, because I get asked that. Why don't we, why don't we share the positive? That we don't have nineteen hundred lab confirmed cases, we only, so.
Right. And so I look at that, that's because of the good work we've all done, right? Like, those restrictions that we put into place had a positive impact, right? Like if we hadn't done the Stay Home, Stay Safe, we would be in a whole nother situation. And so I look at that as, this is, this is evidence that our, what we're doing is working. And, I don't know, I'd look at it as a positive thing. We took a positive step to prevent increased burden on our citizens and on our healthcare system, so.
And it is good to see you smile.
Yeah, thank you.
See, and you know, more positive news, I had a request from a constituent of, you know, if we could find out how many people were actually in the hospital and the number that came back to me that we had three people.
Yeah, it's.
In the hospital.
Yeah.
Which is, I don't, I don't care who's doing the measuring, that's great. It's also, it's also a two-edged sword. So it puts pressure on us, it puts pressure on leadership to, you know, look to the state, look to, you know, okay, so when can we make changes and when can we get back to, you know, somewhat what we were doing before in, in various ways? So, but, it's good to get that information out.
Yeah. And then again, it'll be interesting to see when, as testing increases, what will, like, we're going to find more cases, how many more will we find?
It'll be interesting.
Right? So, we'll see.
Yep, I, I agree, there is, I mean, I think if someone had said to us thirty days ago, "Here's, let me tell you where Buncombe County is going to be in thirty days," I think we've all been like, "That is amazing," right? Like, the forecasts were so much scarier, right? And, and a lot of communities, you know, have unfortunately kind of those forecasts have, have, have unfortunately realized. So, there's, there is, we're in a much better place than most of our colleagues around the state and around the country for metro areas of our size. We are, and, and we probably had some good luck, but mostly I think it's just been great, great work, you know, including by the community. I just think the community has been so responsive to this, even though there is a lot of, a lot of financial pain and hardship. I just, you know, and I'm sure y'all hear it too, from different businesses who reach out and ask questions, but the vast majority have said, "I totally understand why the county's doing this and I support it. I just want to understand how it works. I want to understand how the process is going to work going forward." So we really, we really appreciate everyone's great work on this. Just, you know, I guess just one, one last question while we've got y'all here. In terms of, in terms of testing, it is, it is great that we have such a low number relative to the number of tests taken, because, you know, you see some of these other places in just recent, recent news stories where, you know, there's a concern about a detention facility or some other facility and they go in and actually the number of positive cases is, is really high. I mean, in a way, the good news out of some of those stories is that there seem to be, you know, a lot of people who are positive but who aren't getting really sick. So that's, so maybe on the, the bad news is, is it's even more transmittable in certain environments than people might have been concerned, but the number of people getting really, really sick is lower. So kind of a mixed bag there, but that's not what we're seeing in Buncombe County, which is great, as of now. But as we, as we do move forward and we open more businesses, I think that, you know, that testing is going to be so important to make sure we're getting more data input coming in continuously to make sure they're staying at the kind of levels or close to the kind of levels that we are, we've got today. So, anyway, maybe it's not a question, maybe it's just a comment, but thanks, thanks for being here. Any other, any other last questions or thoughts from any commissioners while we've got our health fix here?
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
We have three states around us, Georgia, Tennessee, and South Carolina. Are we addressing any Buncombe County resident that goes into one of those states that's getting ready to reopen come Friday and they come back here? Or is they just?
We have a, we have a, we have a ban on all leisure tourism, right? So nobody from those states.
I'm talking about for us, a Buncombe County resident who leaves here to go to South Carolina to go to the lake.
No.
So there's nothing that says they can't, they have to quarantine to get back, because that's going to be a question that was asked before I came here. If I go to the lake in Tennessee on Saturday, do I have to quarantine when I get back here Sunday afternoon?
No.
I think the current policy says all travel should be limited to essential travel. Is that correct?
Not, not, well, not, not if, we, we can't regulate businesses outside our own county.
No, no, I don't mean we regulate businesses outside our own county. I mean, that Buncombe County residents' travel is limited to essential travel.
It's, it's, it's not. So if someone has a job in another state or another county, and even if that, that occupation would not be deemed essential in Buncombe County, they are allowed to travel for that. So with the theory that we can't, we can tell businesses what to do in our county, but we can't tell businesses what to do in counties outside of Buncombe County. That's been the kind of a.
Correct. I think part of the question.
Not that we would, we would encourage.
Yeah.
That, but there's not a, there's not a regulation on it.
Right. I think part of the question was for people not traveling for business, people thinking they're going to go down to a, a lake in Georgia or to the beach in South Carolina. And so we discourage non-essential travel for those purposes. And I would, I would speak, our policy now says that people coming from out of state to Buncombe County for non-essential purposes should quarantine at their place of residence, whether that's their home or vacation rental, for two weeks before entering the community. I think that some would, would apply here, but speaking directly to the residents of North Carolina and Buncombe County, like, you shouldn't, just because Georgia and South Carolina might be opening things, you shouldn't be going down there and going to these group events or going to the beach and exposing yourself. The different states will do different things they think is most prudent, but the threat of COVID-19 overwhelming our healthcare system still exists and will exist for the next several months. And we don't want to waste the sacrifice, the hard sacrifices that our community has made these last couple of weeks at the individual and local business level to keep those numbers low. We don't want to waste that sacrifice by doing silly things that are non-essential now. So just ask everybody to use some common sense and think about the bigger picture.
So I think what our order says is that if someone comes here from a hotspot, doesn't say hotspot, or it says out of state that you have to self-quar, self-quarantine, the objective there is if you're coming here and you're staying and you're, you're going to have to come and quarantine yourself for fourteen days before you can get out. You know, you're, you're not going to have people at the border stopping somebody with their bass boat on the way to Hartwell, you know, with somebody in it. And, and if they feel like that's essential and there's only two of them, then that's their, their decision to make, but.
And I would, I would remind everyone that a large percentage of our initial cases all came from out of state. So people were bringing it here. This, we don't, that's what we don't want to happen. We don't want people to, now that we have a good control of it, we don't want people going out of the state and bringing it back to us, so we have to start our fight over again.
And so Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Rar just pointed out, I was kind of, because this is one of the questions that when it first started, we were talking about, you know, someone reached out and was like, "I understand the essential businesses in Buncombe County, but I work in Henderson County, so can I get a work?" We huddled on it and we decided, well, our regulation doesn't stop that. But the state order does speak to non-essential travel as well. So I was just referring to our county policy, but there is a state policy that only essential travel should be undertaken. So there's a state-level policy that speaks to this, this point as well.
And I think that's what, I think that's what you'll see. I mean, it'll be within probably the state guidelines of what people are doing, so. I would like to get in my car and drive as far as I could go, so long as I didn't have stop gas at the.
All right. Hey, thank you to, to you and everyone on your team. We appreciate it and thanks for being here tonight for this great update.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, Brian?
Yes, sir.
And I'm getting eat up with emails and texts here since this has started. And the questions seem to be the same, the small businesses, is Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, they've got hundreds of people in them, and the smaller businesses have none. Barber shop, got three beauty shops here that is, you know, what is, I mean, how long, if hundreds of people can get in Ingles, Walmart, is, how long are we going to make them suffer on these small businesses?
So I'll take a quick stab at it and then if the staff wanted to, so, you know, the, the parameters so far have kind of been thinking about what's, not necessarily the size of a facility, but is it essential? Like grocery, you know, people have to.
Yeah.
People have to eat. People, there's certain, people need medical supplies. So whether it's a small grocery store or a big grocery store, you know, we have to have grocery stores. So whereas some small shops, like, you know, I mean, I, we could do one thing, I'm sure people would say, "Please open the barber shops, please do that," right?
Yes.
But it's, so it's, it's very inconvenient, it's crimping our style, but it's not like food, right? So that's, I think that's kind of the logic that, you know, the state-level policies and kind of what I've, you know, we've heard from our, our local health staff is kind of the essential versus non-essential frame. We know that the, the statewide policy is set to expire at the end of the month and we don't know exactly what they're going to do, but I think the, kind of the assumption that our staff have relayed is that there's going to be some extensions, probably some changes. So hopefully there'll be increasing flexibility coming forward for some of these things that might not be essential but would sure be great to have. But those policies are still under development, development at the state level. And, and do you want to speak Fletcher to the local kind of, what's the term you're using now again?
Adaptive response.
Adaptive.
I got one thing first, is, and this has been several emails, but one, Lowe's, Home Depot are considered essential, correct? Walmart, but you have the kids and everyone buying TVs and toys. Where does that go at?
So we've addressed that in our latest iteration of our order. We've talked about businesses that have multiple sub-departments should be focusing only on the essential functions. And the enforcement of that is just complaint-based. So we're, we have addressed in that. I do want to speak really quickly. Next week, the governor's executive order is set to expire on Wednesday. We're expecting before that, he'll give some additional guidance about what parts of that will extend into May, what we modify. Locally, what we're doing though, is we're making our own plan, we're making a framework for what our, our phases of our adaptive response will look like, how soon and what will those options are for us as we start opening up non-essential retail and other, other things. And we're, we're landing out for leadership this week and we'll continue working forward on that.
So.
So we are, we're addressing that every day in the EOC to get us back to opening our community.
Yeah, and I think what I'm hearing, you know, locally, like all, all the other commissioners is, you know, some of the terms that's being used, like essential and non-essential, you know, just that, it means different, different, you know, things to folks. And I think the logic is, is if you can put five hundred people or four hundred or three hundred or two hundred or whatever the number is in a, in a, in a Lowe's, and they can follow the lines and it's five people for every thousand square foot, and in a toy store in downtown Asheville, why, why can't you put the same lines on the floor and allow five people a thousand square foot? Now, the reality is, is that's not in y'all's wheelhouse, that's coming from somewhere else. And when that comes here, you know, we have to, to weigh the, you know, the, the risk and reward. And when we think about essential, we, we have to realize we're, we are thinking essential based on consumption, okay? Are you, are everybody with me on that? Based on my consumption. We're not thinking about essential based on that retailer, okay? That business. And those businesses would probably deem themselves as very essential and more essential as we go along. And hopefully, you know, my, where I'm at, hopefully, if we're watching our nursing homes, we're watching our, our most vulnerable, we're trying to, you know, ramp up the, ramp up the testing. And if they loosen up at the state level, then we can follow some of that, some of that, that guidance. That would make sense to be able to, to do, that would allow some of these, these businesses that are struggling, if they can do it safely and we can watch our numbers and we don't have an uptick, then we can, you know, hopefully make a difference in that, in that vibrant economy as well as, you know, taking care of our, our public too. So I think we're all hearing that, Commissioner, from different folks.
All right, thanks Commissioner. Thank you, thank you both for being here. All right, next up on the agenda is Don Warren is going to provide the financial quarterly report. All right. Next up on the agenda is Don Warren is going to provide the financial quarterly report.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It sounded weird. I don't want to lean too close. People have been.
That's good.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is the third quarter financial report. So this is audited or unaudited information through March 31st. We'll talk about the general fund highlights and the solid waste highlights. So general fund, you can see the budget for revenue was 337 million. Year-to-date actuals are 276 million, and that's 82.06% of budget. This gives a breakout of the various categories, ad val, local option, sales tax, and going down. As you can see, they're all trending really well as of March 31st. Expenditures, total budget is 337 million, total actuals 227 million, we're 67.4%. As you can see, this is how we bu- budget. So it's by function. Everything is looking really good as of March 31st. This is the same information, but it's broken down by category. So salaries and benefits, operating, program support. Everything there is coming in under budget as far as the categories are concerned. Solid waste fund. Total revenue budget is 9.6 million. Actual year-to-date is just over 8 million. That's 83.3%. Sales and service is the biggest category and it is doing really well. It's outpacing last year quite a bit. Expenditures, 9.6 budgeted, 4.9 million spent to date. That's 51.5%. And everything else is under budget. So that being said, everything looks really good for March 31st. I have no idea what's going to happen next quarter when I come back.
I love it.
Might be the last good one for a while, Don.
I know. But I wanted to give you some good news tonight. So there it is.
Thank you.
But, you know, keep in mind that we have no idea what's going to go on with the economy. I mean, you guys are all aware of, everything's closed down and sales tax revenues are going to come in who knows where. I mean, some guidance from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I don't know if you've seen this, that it could be anywhere from 10 to 50% less for the next several months. We're projecting probably 35% less for this fourth quarter. We'll see how that comes in. We'll get some more numbers next month. We're going to keep a close eye on it and we'll keep you up to date on it. That's all we can do. Do you have any questions?
No.
I would say, Commissioners, real briefly, that one of the things as a staff we've done is making sure any vacant positions that we're seeing now, we're holding off on filling them automatically. We're actually reviewing every single position. So it's not a hard freeze on positions, but it's actually very much.
It's not a hard freeze.
It's a soft freeze.
It's a soft freeze.
We're just waiting until we know what, until we know more.
Great.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. All right. We don't have any public hearing this evening. And is there any other county manager reports? All right. Under new business, first item is consideration of a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Asheville and Buncombe County regarding employee redeployment. Michael Free will present this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I'm here to discuss or describe as you, a request and to recommend an interlocal agreement between the city of Asheville and county of Buncombe for redeployment of respective employees to the other entity. This would be an agreement where the city agrees to provide employees to serve on a temporary basis and redeployment in county positions to support continuity of operations. And the city and the county agrees to do the same for the city. The city council approved this agreement a week ago. And by this agreement, we structured the rights and responsibilities of the respective human resources directors and risk managers. No money changes hands. The home employer of any redeployed employee will still play, pay the salary. And if anyone has a slip and fall or other accident, the home employer will be responsible for any workers' comp that might ensue. And this is, this is simply required because it is a mutual agreement between local entities and it requires an agreement and a resolution. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
So moved.
All right. There's a motion to approve the resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up is a resolution supporting the recommendation and designation of Craggy Mountain Wilderness and associated properties on U.S. Forest Service lands. I will say a few words about this. This is an issue that the commission passed a resolution on a few years ago, unanimously supported by the board at the request of citizens in the county, including a lot of the folks who live up in Ivy Valley in Barnersville. And the U.S. Forest Service is going through a process of revising their forest management plan for all of the national forests in western North Carolina, over a million acres of land on the Pisgah and Nantahala National Forest. And so the request came from residents, a lot of the same folks who were here and filled up the, filled up the commission chambers to support this two years ago, to do an updated resolution because the forest plan, when it's revised, covers the management of that forest land for the next 10 to 15 years. So the Forest Service is taking public comment on the updated management plan. And and so the citizens would like for the county to pass a resolution in support of the Big Ivy property. A lot of other, this is, you know, this is not an uncommon thing for local counties to do. I think a lot of other counties across western North Carolina have also considered resolutions regarding management of federal lands within, you know, areas in close proximity to, to their county or within their county. So we have received several, several public comments on this item. And as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we're going to, we're going to read them. I think there's, there's four of them. And so why don't we go ahead and do that? Why don't I read the comments and then we'll have discussion and go from there? All right. The first comment is from, before, before I go into this, just for a little more context for folks who are not, might be watching this, the Big Ivy area is tract of land, about 13,000 acres located, it's all in Buncombe County. And it's along the Blue Ridge Parkway. If you go up to Craggy Gardens, it's, it's all the national forest lands around Craggy Gardens. And going down to the community of Barnersville. All right. The first comment is from Stephen McBride. As a longtime resident of Buncombe County, specifically Barnersville, I reside but a short jaunt from the magical Craggy Big Ivy Forest. My ties to this special forest are many and I love it for travels deep. As a professor at Marshall University, I often bring groups of students to explore Craggy's winding trails and to hone their photographic skills. Students learn to capture the beautiful flow from one of the many waterfalls or cascading streams in the perfect shutter speed or try macro photography for the first time, getting closer than they've ever been to often rare or endangered species growing along the forest floor. To a lot of these students, this forest is deeper into wilderness than they've ever been and their eyes sparkle with excitement and wonder. As a career professional photographer, I've been very lucky to have traveled the world and have explored some of the earth's most beautiful locations. When I speak of the worlds, of the world-class beauty of the Craggy Mountains, I do so with a firsthand knowledge of the competition and I stand by my words. The Craggy Big Ivy Forest is a truly special, unique place right here in Buncombe County. In fact, the entire westward view shed from Craggy overlook from the Blue Ridge Parkway is the Craggy Big Ivy Forest and it's likely the most photographed spot along the entire Blue Ridge Parkway. Parkway recorded almost 15 million visitors in 2019 and surely most stopped in awe of the Craggy overlook to soak in the beauty and take in the memories home as photographs. As a lifelong adventurer, I regularly hike and bike the trails and gravel roads in the forest. Living a healthy, active lifestyle is a requirement for my mental clarity and physical well-being. The Craggy Mountains' open space and challenging environment enables this healthy lifestyle and provides peace and solace in this often hectic world. It's a place to escape to, a place to think clearly and breathe freely. I wholeheartedly support the creation of the Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area, which will permanently protect all 16,000 acres of this special place. Next comment is from Doug Keen, who lives in Weaverville. Actually, this is about a different topic. So I'll just read them all while we're going to do this. So please advise on the next steps of the Family Leave Act as presented to the board by Sharon Burke at your March 17th, 2020 meeting. Thank you. Next comment is from Hannah Fergiuli. Hope I'm pronouncing that close to right, from the Big Ivy community. From my small farm at the base of the mountains, I can look up and see Craggies standing tall and proud and beautiful. When we first began planning for how to speak to you about our hopes for permanently protecting the 16,000-acre Craggy Big Ivy section of Pisgah National Forest and a Wilderness and National Scenic Area, we were living in a different time. It's incredible how quickly things change, clarifying overnight what's truly important. In the weeks that followed the onset of the current pandemic, I spent every evening walking in the Big Ivy Forest and continued this practice until the forest closed to the public. During this time, countless friends shared stories of their time in the forest, a place that felt safe and nourishing when everything else, where everywhere else was brought only anxiety and fear. It was incredible how despite everything happening in our human world, spring continued to unfold. Wildlife continued to wake to warmer days in a frenzy of excitement. And the rains fell and fed the pristine creeks that flowed down the mountain into the Ivy River watershed, supporting thousands of people's wells and springs. I believe there are countless reasons to protect Big Ivy and Craggy permanently. And at the top of that list is for clean water as it provides to those who, of us who live in the community to its west and to the other residents of Buncombe County who are proud to call it our home and backyard. With so much uncertainty in the world, especially now preserving one of the largest old-growth forests in the eastern United States should be a decision we make without hesitation. We are at a critical time in the history of this forest and our community. By protecting this section permanently, we can not only guarantee clean water and for future generations, we can all breathe a little easier knowing we have a place to go in time of crisis for solace and healing. I hope and encourage you to pass a resolution supporting the full 16,000-acre Craggy National Scenic Area and Expanded Wilderness. Thank you. Next comment is from Will Harland, who lives in Barnersville. The Craggy Big Ivy Section of Pisgah National Forest is one of the wildest and oldest forests in the country. It's only 15 miles from where you are sitting tonight. I hope you will support the resolution to create the Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area. There's widespread and overwhelming public support for Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area. Already 5,000 public comments supporting permanent protection for Craggy have flooded the Forest Service, by far more than any other area on the national forest. Over 120 local businesses and organizations in Buncombe County have endorsed the Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area. In the past six weeks, 4,600 more people have signed on to support the Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area. Vast majority of the total comments received by the Forest Service have been specifically in support of this designation. National media outlets are covering the excitement and momentum building around Craggy. Here in Barnersville, we wholeheartedly support this designation. Friends of Big Ivy, our community organization, have swelled to over 3,000 members and supporters who all want to see Craggy permanently protected. People out here and all across the country and all across the country care deeply about this wild and ancient forest. And they all want to see 16,000 acres of it permanently protected. I hope you will support the resolution to create the Craggy Wilderness and National Scenic Area. All right. The next comment is from Sam Evans, National Forest and Parks Program Leader with the Southern Environmental Law Center. The Craggy Mountains, including Big Ivy, Shope Creek, and the Blue Ridge Parkway corridor that connects them, are beloved by families whose roots run generations deep in Buncombe County, by newcomers who are sinking roots here now, and by the tourists who support local businesses. Whether and how to protect the Craggies is now at issue in the Nantahala and Pisgah Forest Plan Revision. At one end of the spectrum, most of the area might be left open to logging and road construction. This is the status quo, which has forced local citizens to mobilize to protect, to protest of such projects. One step further on the spectrum, the Forest Service might offer a 15-year short-term administrative protection. Alternately, as proposed here, the Forest Service could recommend this area to Congress for permanent protection, ensuring that future generations can enjoy it as we have. What different options for designation? Why choose a National Scenic Area with embedded wilderness? First, the National Scenic Area would formally recognize the extraordinary value of the Craggy's scenic integrity. Most people experience the Craggies without ever setting foot on the trail. Around a half million visitors per year enjoy this area's scenic grandeur from the Blue Ridge Parkway. Around 5,000 drivers each day are greeted by the Craggy View Shed as they travel to Buncombe County and Madison Counties from north, from the north. As shown by the attached map, 92% of the proposed scenic wilderness area are visible from just a few popular and close-by vantage points in the immediate foreground of roads and trails. The proposed designation would permanently protect this incomparable scenic view shed. Second, a National Scenic Area and embedded wilderness area would provide the greatest possible permanent protection while also offering the flexibility to emphasize existing recreational and traditional uses, including world-class mountain biking, rock climbing, horseback riding, dispersed camping, hunting and fishing, edible plant gathering, and hiking through old-growth forests and alongside waterfalls. Please vote yes on the proposed resolution and ask the Forest Service to recommend the Craggies for permanent protection as National Scenic Area with embedded wilderness area. The last comment is from Tiff Worley. The comment is, okay, and this is on a different topic, but I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Thank you for taking electronic public comment at this time. I have a concern over the increased dependence on mask-wearing as a protection from spread of COVID versus the six-foot distancing practiced earlier when masks were being deemed as not that effective. I've noticed that people wearing masks are less likely to maintain a distance of six feet from others because they seem to have the perception that they are now safe for society and just, with just wearing the mask. This is not true, and I hope the county commission will continue to stress the importance of physical distancing in public. Thank you. All right. Those are all the comments that were mailed in. So you can see on the agenda, we have the resolutions. I don't think there's a need to, to read all of it. I think the, the contents of the letters describe them pretty well. So unless someone feels we need to read, read the entire thing, it's very similar, but basically updated from what we adopted a couple of years ago.
Chairman, I was here when this was done, so I'm happy to make a motion to approve. I remember when this room was full of green shirts. And so, and I'll say what I said last time, that I am in awe of those mountains because of the creator that made them. I just want to caution folks to, as, as we look at that beauty to be, let it, let us tread lightly if we preserve it. You know, let us tread lightly as we, as we, as we use it.
I second the motion, please.
All right, great. There's a motion and a second further discussion. All right. Well, this is one of my favorite places in western North Carolina. It's a beautiful part of the world. And this is one of the most beautiful of them all. And ecologically, very unique, special. So.
Let me add on to that, Chairman Newman, that this is in my backyard in North Buncombe. And I've heard from a lot of folks that live even in my own neighborhood about how important this is for us to protect. And that it's the first and only protected wilderness in Buncombe County. And that's really something for us to be proud of in protecting the trails and waterfalls. And I'm really excited to support this so that everyone in Buncombe County, but particularly those of us in the north, can enjoy this for many, many years to come.
Great. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And we will forward this to members that will forward this to the U.S. Forest Service and we'll share it with members of our congressional delegation so they can be aware of it as well. All right. Next up, budget amendment for GE Aviation 1 NC payment. And Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good evening. So the first budget amendment is related to the North Carolina Department of Commerce in 2013 awarded, awarded GE Aviation with a one North Carolina, so one NC grant. The grant is an incentive to the company should the company meet job and investment performance targets. One NC awards are paid directly to local governments and then distributed to the grant recipient company. This budget amendment authorizes the receipt and the distribution of the $929,000 in the state of North Carolina, from the state of North Carolina 1 NC payment to GE Aviation. So this budget amendment increases the expenditure and the revenue for us to receive that and to pay it back out to GE Aviation.
So what is the name of the, remind me the name of the nonprofit that we have established to receive it?
You mean on the one Buncombe? On the one Buncombe Fund?
No.
On this?
Which? No. Oh, come on. Anyhow, we have a, we have a nonprofit established that's within the county that the money comes in and then it goes to, is that, is that correct? Is that how this is distributed?
This one was, will actually post to the general fund. So it'll be posted to the Economic Development Cost Center and paid back out from Economic Development Cost Center.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the budget amendment for Dogwood Trust Foundation First Responder Alternative Housing.
Yes. So Commissioner Belcher, maybe what you're thinking of is our we have we do have a grants project, grant project fund, which is a multi-year fund available to us.
I actually wasn't thinking at all, so.
So this budget amendment is for the receipt of funding, so this one is a receipt of grant funding from the Dogwood Foundation in the amount of $54,378 to Buncombe County for use towards the expense of pilot, a pilot project for alternative lodging, and if necessary, self-isolation as an initiative for healthcare, first responders, and other key individuals assisting in public health efforts for the prevention of communicable disease. So $54,378 coming from the Dogwood Foundation. We would ask for the ability to accept the grant and then to establish the budget in our grant projects multi-year fund totaling $54,378 for use as it is described.
And this would cover 50% of the cost, and is Buncombe County providing the match?
Yes, sir.
Great.
So is that coming out of the 500 that we put out for the other the other day, additional COVID money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. I move approval. Second.
And so, you know, this is partly in response to some of the stories we read around the country where people who are working in this important line of work, they might not feel safe going home, don't want to get members of their family sick. So this thing is a great, a great project, and I really appreciate the partnership, folks working to develop it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And finally, budget amendment for Public School Capital Needs Fund, ADA greenhouse project and debt service.
Yes. So this budget amendment does have two elements. The first element is a request to restore funding for a prematurely closed project. So we brought before the board on March 3, a budget amendment to close out a large number of projects. We prematurely closed this project, and there is a need for Buncombe County school system to complete a final upfitting project for the community high school at their greenhouse. So this request is to reinstate what it would have been, the $42,697 that was that was remaining on that project as available for use. We are asking to reinstate that so that they can complete that final project. That's the first part of the amendment. The second part of the amendment adds expenditure budget for estimated debt service issuance costs and interest payment. So you've heard from Don Warren on several occasions around debt issuance and refunding across school capital projects as well as general fund. This is specific to current estimates. Finance continues to be in contact with our financial advisors to determine the final amounts. We hope to not have to come back with additional requests related to these expenditures, but we are in need of additional budget to cover the current invoice amounts for the debt issuance and the interest payment. The offsetting revenues are our Article 39 revenues that would be expected to cover that, so there's not any particularly new funding for this request that we would expect that the Article 39 sales tax would cover it.
All right. Great. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We don't have any board appointments for the meeting this evening. We've already read all the public comments that were received. I'd like to announce that on May 5, at 3:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold their next pre-meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On May 5, at 5:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold their next regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Ms. Hockaday, is there a need for a closed session? Okay, great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.